Now I call to Senate Clark County Commissioner's meeting to order. I'm going to call Mr. Garfield Weavers for invocation.
Please bow. Lord, thank you for this day and for all the blessings you have awarded us. Thank you for this Christmas season. Help us all to be mindful of the true reason for this season. Thank you for giving us your son and allowing us the opportunity to celebrate his birth. Pour out your blessings on our servicemen and women. Be with them and protect them. Be with their families as they endure this season, many times alone or without their loved ones. Now bless this assembly. Give us the wisdom to do our county's work, watch over us and keep us in your goodness. We ask all these blessings in God's name. Amen.
Let us stand for a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, on God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Call on Mr. Mashman for adjustments to the agenda.
Mr. Chair, there are a couple of adjustments to make. Under administrative matters, item C, want to make a substitution in item C, and we will be removing the request from the Health Department to apply for a $30,000 United Way grant. Remove that and replace it with a request to amend the Ardell County Health Department fee policy to allow debt set off for family planning debts. So that's a substitution under item C. Would like to also add, under closed session, a property acquisition. Mr. Chair, those are the adjustments that I have to the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mashman. Do we have any additional additions to the corrections to the agenda? If not, do I have a motion to accept the agenda?
A move, Mr. Chairman.
A move or in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed likewise. Presentations of special recognition awards we have now, an appointment before the board, number A's request for the MLK Partners Organization for adoption of their proclamation entitled "Many Cultures, One Community," in honor of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. I'll call Mr. Tykes for this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's a pleasure for me to present this proclamation this evening. The proclamation to proclaim the week of January 17th through the 21st, 2008, as "Many Cultures, One Community," in honor of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Whereas the Greater Stateful Chamber of Commerce, Aridale Museums, Priority House, Impact Incorporated, My Familia Institute, Mitchell Community College, Mount Pleasant AME Zion Church, American Red Cross, Stateful Branch NAACP, Stateful Housing Authority, Stateful Human Relations Council, YMCA of Ardell County, Teen Health, Wheel, Pine Grove AME Zion Church, Boys and Girls of the Piedmont, and the South Stateful Weed and Seed Committee, collectively known as the MLK Partners, have joined together to provide community activities over five days so that residents of Ardell County can join together in fellowship and in the spirit of unity. And whereas, the community activities will include programs celebrating and commemorating the life and legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., a health fair, a cultural fair, a community workshop service, a community prayer breakfast with Reverend Joe A. Jackson as featured speaker, along with a Make a Difference Day and an open reception at the Court Street Gallery. And whereas, the inspiration for the five-day series of events designed to reach out and make a difference in the lives of the residents of Ardell County came from the teachings of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Now therefore, the Aridale County Board of Commissioners proclaims the week of January 17th through the 21st, 2008, as "Many Cultures, One Community," in honor of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., this the 18th day of December, 2007. Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we adopt this proclamation.
Mr. Tykes, you heard a motion? Are there any questions regarding the motion? If not, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed likewise.
And at this time, I will ask Mr. Jones and others that would like to come forward to receive this proclamation.
Congratulations on the work and that, with all of this work that's coming up, and certainly I hope I'll be able to do some of the other things. Thank you for all you did for our, um, if you are, to, like.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll call on Scott Lenhart on the Pandemic Flu Preparedness Coordination Committee Survey findings.
I was asked to come tonight to present the findings from our committee that was appointed last December by the commissioners to look into the readiness for pandemic flu in the county. And I'd like to just briefly review on some of the things that we've done in the last year. We had a total of 28 members appointed by the commissioners throughout the community, ranging from all the way from Mooresville all the way up to the Harmony area. We broke that committee into two separate committees, a medical and education committee. And these committees met a total of six times, and they were tasked to look into the community agencies, businesses, and the county agencies on the readiness to handle a 40% reduction in case the pandemic flu hit the county. They were asked to take a look at three separate questions to assess the readiness. These questions were, what measures will you take to minimize the spread of the pandemic flu among your workers? What services you will not provide if you experience a 40% absentee rate? And what triggers will prompt you to minimize the spread of the flu among your workers and lead you to reduce services when staffing is reduced by 40%? We felt, the committee felt that if we answered these three questions, if they could answer these three questions, they were prepared. If they could not, then there was some planning that needed to be done within the community and the agencies to be ready. We took a look at, the Education Committee broke up into separate areas to take a look at police, fire, EMS, businesses, home health agencies, hospitals. And some of the findings we found were pretty, well, they weren't really surprising. It's actually fallen on a trend throughout the country that we've been seeing. For example, the state of readiness in our hospitals. The hospitals are ready for a pandemic flu. They do have plans in place. That's required by the Joint Commission Accreditation of Healthcare Organizations. So they are ready. But our biggest provider of healthcare in the area, Piedmont Healthcare, they let it up to each individual practice to be ready, and they could not state the readiness of each of those practices. Our Health Department, we're required to have a pandemic flu plan with the state, which we do, and we also have those three questions answered on how we will, we do services and restructure our organization to handle the workflow if we do lose 40% reduction. And also the county jail, through their partnership with their healthcare service who provides their medical care, they do have a plan in place that will call on other people to come in to backfill any shortages in the county jail healthcare system. As for the county governments, local municipalities, fire, police, and EMS, I gave out a little matrix with the letter we sent to the municipalities. We're not ready. There, there's lacking a lot of plans. A lot of people depend on the county or the Health Department's plan, but that cannot be because I cannot plan for what the sheriff will do, or the State's Fire Department, Police Department, Mooresville Police Department, our county water systems are not prepared to handle a reduction of chemicals in case we have an interruption of commerce with the delivery of goods. So we're really not ready in our county. A lot of people are just, they will wait and see what happens, or we'll wait and see what the county's going to do. We even surveyed some of the county agencies and asked questions, and they, you know, they'll shift people around from non-critical areas to critical areas to cover the backflow, but they're still not addressing some of the other issues. Our fire and EMS is, that's a really serious issue, and even our sanitary landfill, because if we lose 40% of these people to provide these services, somebody's not going to be taken care of, or our services are going to really have an impact on public health and the citizens of this county. Some of the recommendations that we recommend is, excuse me, we also send a letter out stating our findings to each of the municipalities, City of Mooresville, Statesville, our county manager, Harmony, and Troutman. All of these individuals received this letter and the matrix stating our findings. Some of the recommendations the committee recommends is encourage all municipalities and businesses to develop a pandemic flu plan along with an all-hazards plan. If they answer these three questions that I mentioned earlier, and they incorporate an all-hazard plans and put a pandemic flu plan in there, they can be ready for tornadoes and floods and other catastrophic events that might occur here in Statesville. And, you know, people say to me when I present, well, what's the chance of having a catastrophic event? Well, we do have a nuclear power plant that's in our area, that we have an EPZ zone in the southern part of the county. We have two major interstates with transporting god knows what up and down with those tanker trucks. So the event is, is a real, it's, there's a possibility there. Also, Aridale County Emergency Management and Health Department to offer guidance and plan development. One of the things that did come out of this committee, the nursing homes and the home healthcare agencies attended a planning session to develop a plan to handle pandemic flu plans. None of the nursing homes, healthcare assisted living facilities had a plan. They always said, well, depend on our infection control plan or our hazard plan. Well, that doesn't address the 40% reduction when you don't have staff to take care of the individuals that need medications, or the lack of food, the lack of medication that you're going to see. So they attended a planning session. We had about 32 agencies signed up to come to the session. We had about 16 actually showed, and David Martin and myself, we went through a about three-hour session on how to prepare for pandemic flu and all hazards plans, providing them with templates and information on what to be put into the program. So that was one of the recommendations that we provide, the templates, the websites, and training sessions for our county agencies and our towns and municipalities who would like to come to build the plan. Also have the Statesville City Schools and Mooresville Grade School Districts, they're instructed by the Department of Instruction for a pandemic flu plan. I know Mooresville Grade School has been working on it. I have not seen the plan, but I have sat down with Dr. Hargrove, Hargrave, and their head nurse, Karen Cresley, and looked at their plan and made some recommendations for their plan in the school district for how to handle a reduction in teachers and if they close the schools for a six-to-eight week period or an 18-month period. Also, we will continue with pandemic flu education program out of the emergency preparedness section of the Health Department. We have done well over 15,000, touched over 15,000 people in this county in presentations alone in the last year and a half. And also have all departments and divisions in our county government to review and update their COO plans and to focus on the three main questions on how to handle a pandemic flu, and also take that time to take a look at updating their all hazards plan, also to include the pandemic flu plan. These are our recommendations, and if you have any questions, I'm open to any questions. And I'd like to thank Mr. Robertson for being the chair of that committee and leading us to our conclusions. He was a thriving force for our team.
There were a couple of problems. I know when we went to, to get this thing started, I really thought we would have a little bit more success than we did, but there were a couple of real showstoppers that, that prevented, that I think prevented this thing from, from, from looking a little bit more complete than it does at this point. And, and I would say the, the two things that probably, or really, there were three that really kind of, that, that hampered success. One was, most people just don't believe the figure that the federal government provided us that said that the next pandemic flu will, at some point during the peak of the flu, that 40% of the people will be out because of the flu. That doesn't mean that 40% of them have the flu at one time, but if you're a single mom or a single dad and your child has the flu, you're going to, you're going to be out of work because of it. So they're saying that at the peak, 40% of the workforce will not be able to attend work. And that is such a large number that I think most people just, just blew off the whole, the whole scenario because they, they did not believe that number. The next was, the next problem that we had was, is really, if you look at the number of nursing homes or assisted living centers, and there's quite a few, as you can see from the list, you know, their plan is once a patient gets to a certain decline of health, they go to the hospital. Well, the hospitals are, if they have 40% less staff, then, then they don't get to utilize 100% of their beds. And if you look at the population, the elderly population that we have, who, who already are requiring some assistance, and you know that they're going to be harder hit than the general population, right now, the plan that's in place is basically that we are going to, we are going to flood our hospitals with that population, well, I won't say only because it's 100%, but a large percentage of our available beds at that point are going to be consumed by those patients. And that's not, that's not good for the community, but that, that's an issue. And then the last one was, is people just, it was, there was a general reluctance to, to go through and define what they couldn't do. Everybody wanted to say, well, we'll just, we'll suck it up and we'll, we'll drive on and, and even if we have 40% of our people out, we'll still get the job done. And that doesn't work. If you can get the job done with 40% less people, then you got too many staff. There's something, there's something wrong with your current manning. And, and, and there was a genuine reluctance for folks to go in and say, there's some things that we do today that we won't be able to do if there's 40% of our people out. And that was important for this committee because this group wanted to educate the public of, if there is a pandemic flu, what to expect that will happen and what services that you can expect to be temporarily discontinued. And we never really could get that defined. And our committee had no, we don't, we don't have any sort of regulatory authority to force people to do those things. So, so basically, all we could do is report what we know, and this is what, this is what we know. So it wasn't the pretty picture that, that we had hoped to paint, but it is an accurate picture.
We will still continue through my section at the Health Department Emergency Preparedness Preparation. We will still offer programs and speaking engagements, and I do plan to have some workshops for agencies who wish to attend for planning purposes. So, and that's one of the things that we've been doing in the last two years, but right now, it's just, it's local civic groups that get us in to speak, or some church groups, some home health agencies had us over to speak. But right now, when, two years ago, when this was at its limelight, I was out every day, almost every day of the week, and now I maybe have one or two speaking engagements every six months. So it's really died down a lot, but the, the reality is that pandemic flu will occur when we do not know. We had a few scares, and right now, it's coming again in Asia. If you've been looking at the news, the world health news, there's been some cases of human-to-human transfer in Asia, and it's picking up again over in Pakistan, the, the flu. So for us, it's just a matter of time when it happens here. And it may not be a bird flu, it may be a different type of flu virus that causes a pandemic.
Thank you, sir.
If I couldn't mention, Mac Herring from the town of Mooresville and Mike Spath from the town of Troutman both chaired the two subcommittees and, and worked hard, and all the committee members really did go in and make a good, honest effort to, to fulfill their obligations. I served on the, on the Education Committee, which looked at how do we go about educating people about the dangers of the pandemic flu and then what they can do. And I will tell you, that, that committee was, everybody participated, everybody was thorough, and we looked at options that certainly wouldn't have been brought about had it only been two or three folks sitting around a table. So the, the group worked hard, and, and I appreciate all the folks who volunteered to be a part of that.
Thank you. Mr. Robertson, thank you. We will now declare the meeting to be in a public hearing. We have two matters. Consideration of possible economic development incentives for the NGK Ceramics Company. Economic developer Melanie O'Connor Underwood will speak on behalf of this company. Ms. Underwood.
I come before you tonight to ask consideration of incentives for NGK Ceramics. They will be doing their 11th expansion at this facility. It is a $42.6 million expansion. I'm asking for consideration of incentives in the amount of $1,62,509 over seven years. I have with me Steve Daley, who's the general manager of that facility, and he'd like
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen. As Melanie said, my name is Steve Daley. I am the vice president and general manager for NGK Ceramics in Mooresville. If you're not familiar where we're located, we're in the south, Ardell Industrial Park, which is just on the north side of Mooresville. We've been there since 1988, and as you said, this is our 11th expansion, so we're very fortunate for that. Today, we're employing about 440 people, and we're manufacturing the ceramic substrates which are used for catalytic converters in automobiles and, more recently, in diesel engines and trucks. As we look to the future, we're seeing regulations tighten, particularly in the diesel truck area, and I'm happy to announce that we're planning to expand our facilities to support that expected demand. The expansion, as you said, is approximately $42.6 million, and we figure at least 22 people as a minimum over the next two years. Tonight, I come here to ask for your support for the expansion. Our parent company has many options to increase capacity, not only at this site, but at other sites in the world, and these incentives are helping us convince them that Mooresville's the right place to do it. So we greatly appreciate your vision to help Ardell County grow, and pleasure to do our part as a business partner to the community to help the growth as well. So thank you. Any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Daley. Any additional questions, Daley?
Thank you.
If not, do we have anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in regards to this request? If not, we'll close this particular hearing and... If not, we'll close this particular hearing, and I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we grant this incentive to NGK.
Thank you, Ms. Teich. Are there any questions regarding the motion? If no question, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
I would oppose likewise. Thank you, Mr. Daley, Ms. Underwood. Our next hearing will have to do with consideration of resolution, making certain findings regarding financing of school facilities pursuant to an installment financing agreement and their authorization to file an application with the local government commission. I will call on Ms. Blumstein at this time.
Thank you. This is our and date fixed by the Board of Commissioners for the public hearing upon the proposed financing pursuant to an installment financing agreement to be dated as of March 1st, 2008, or such other date as the parties agree upon between the County of Iredale, North Carolina and Iredale County Public Facilities Corporation, a nonprofit corporation, to finance the expansion of Celeste Hinkle Elementary School, the construction and equipping of a new elementary school, including the acquisition of land, therefore, the expansion of East Iredale Elementary School, the construction and equipping of a new elementary school to replace two existing elementary schools, Northview and Ebenezer, the expansion of Shepherd Elementary School, the expansion of South Iredale High School, the expansion of Statesville High School, the construction and equipping of a new seven-hundred-and-fifty-student elementary school as part of Mooresville Grade School District, and the conversion of the existing Mooresville Intermediate School to a new middle school. These, this financing will be issued. It will not be a pledge of the faith and credit of the county, will be done as an installment financing agreement. Debt service will be budgeted annually. It will not require a tax increase. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Have any questions for Ms. Blumstein? Do we have anyone in the audience wishing to speak in regards to this request?
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Buddy Hemrick. I've looked over the figures on this. The proposal is for a bond issue of a hundred and six million dollars with a cap of a hundred and fifteen million dollars plus interest over a twenty-year period. Four years ago, when the Iredale State School system came before you for a bond, they could not finance such a high amount of a bond issue. I've talked with the finance department, and since then, we've had reevaluation, a tax increase, an increase in collection and sales taxes. That's all a tax increase, either way you look at it. And according to the figures that were presented to you at the spring, I mean, not the spring, the winter retreat you had a couple of weeks ago, you had requests there for, the sheriff is, would like to have a six-hundred-bed jail facilities, increase in his jail facilities, the court system needs more space, you're going to have to rebuild a new animal shelter. And a couple of weeks ago, there was a large crowd here from South Iredale that is wanting an animal shelter down there. If you add all of this into play, when you do your budget next year, if you finance all of that, there's got to be a tax increase somewhere because at the present rate, we cannot pay for all of this without getting more money than what we're taking in now. I've looked at the past history here, and I got these figures from the finance department. The highest certificate of participation bonds that has been passed without a voter referendum was for forty-four million, seven-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand dollars, and that was in 2006. Today, you're asking for a hundred and six million. That would be the largest tax or bond ever spent by this county without a voter referendum from the people of Iredale County that pays the taxes to fund all of this. Ms. Blumstein just read the list of the schools where this money would be spent. I didn't hear any schools north of Statesville that any of this money will be spent on. All of it will be spent from Statesville South. I was shorting the northern end of the county again. So I'm, I asked you tonight to consider putting this amount of a bond issue before the taxpayers, have a bond referendum, and let the voters of Iredale County decide if they want to go in debt, this huge amount of a hundred and six million, or what could be up to a hundred and fifteen million dollars. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in regards to this request? If not, I will call the public hearing closed and entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to adopt the resolution making certain findings relating to the financing of certain school facilities pursuant to an installment financing agreement and authorizing the director of finance and administrative services to file application for approval thereon, thereof by the local government commission.
Thank you, Ms. Teich. Do we have any questions regarding this motion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed likewise. I say it. Okay, thank you, Ms. Blumstein. 女士， Mr. Mashman.
Okay, Mr. Chair, the following are the items under consent agenda. Approval of Budget Amendment Number Twenty-Seven to appropriate an emergency management preparedness supplement grant of six thousand five hundred and sixty-two dollars for the Office of Emergency Management and to appropriate the county's match of six thousand five hundred and sixty-two dollars. The approval of Budget Amendment Number Twenty-eight to use Medicaid and max funds for dental software, server, and network switches. Item C is to approve an amendment to the Iredale County Health Department fee policy to allow debt set off for family planning debts. Item D is approval of Budget Amendment Number Twenty-nine to appropriate funds for the Iredale School System to purchase one hundred and six-point-three-four acres of land on Overcash Road. Item E is approval to contract with Site Solutions for the Parks and Recreation Master Plan at a cost of forty-six thousand one hundred dollars. Item F, request for, or is approval of a North Iredale Park Topography Survey at a cost between three-point-five and four thousand with funds to be derived from the North Iredale Park Fund. Item G is to call for a public hearing on January the fifteenth, two thousand and eight regarding the oh-nine North Carolina DOT Community Transportation Program application. Item H is approval for the library to apply for a telecommunications discount services grant under the Federal Communications Commission E-Rate Program. Item I is approval of volunteer fire department contracts with Central, Harmony, Lake Norman, Monticello, Trinity, Troutman, Union Grove, Wayside, West Iredale, County Line, Sheffield, Callahan, Stony Point, and Wilkes-Iredale. Item J is approval to amend the Pratt Industries Grant Project Ordinance. Item K is approval to declare properties or dwellings, and we're talking about just the dwellings, not the property itself, as surplus, the dwellings at four-twenty and four-twenty-two South Meeting Street as surplus, and to petition the State, the Statesville City Council for demolition approval. Item L is approval of a records retention and disposition schedule for the Veterans Service Office and the Tax Administration Office. Item M is approval of the November refunds and releases. Item N is approval of a contract to purchase a tract of real estate at a price of two-point-two million nine hundred and forty-two thousand dollars and to authorize the county manager to pay the purchase amount and close the transaction. And of course, that's the acreage that is adjoining the current landfill, as described in the attachment. And the item O is approval of the December fourth and sixth, two thousand and seven minutes. Mr. Chair, those are the consent agenda items.
Thank you, Mr. Mashman. All in addition, corrections to those, if not, to have a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Offer that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any questions regarding that motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those likewise, I say it. We have no answers of vacancies occurring on boards and commissions. We do have appointments for the boards and commissions, State for Planning Board, ETJ, one appointment. May I have any one for that? Motion to table?
So moved.
Okay, motion to table. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Adult Care Home Community Advantage Committee, one appointment.
You open the floor for a nomination. I would nominate Mary Barrett.
Mary Barrett. Any other nominations? All in favor of Mary Barrett, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed likewise. Nurse and Home Advantage Committee, four appointments.
Motion to table, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Johnson. Motion to table. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those likewise opposed. Board of Health, five appointments.
Mr. Chairman, there are five vacancies coming up, and four people who are currently on the Board of Health have asked to be reappointed, and one is no longer eligible. I just wanted to take a moment and recognize Steve Knight, who is, is one of the, one of the registered engineers who serves on the Board of Health. He served for three terms, the maximum number of terms that he could serve, four, of three years each. He spent nine years on the Board of Health, and, and a lot of these boards and commissions that we appoint people to, it takes a little bit of work, and it takes some commitment to do the things that they do and to meet their obligations, and, and he's not being renominated tonight because the limit of how many terms he was allowed to serve expired. But I will tell you, I think, I think Steve Knight was certainly a good example of what a good citizen is, and the Board of Health is going to miss him a great deal. So with that being said, I would like to renominate or appoint, reappoint Sylvia Chapman as a nurse representative, Michael Utey as our pharmacist, Dr. Ron Mylum as our optometrist, Dr. Kimberly Randall as our veterinarian, and Mark Tartt is our registered engineer.
Thank you, Mr. Robertson. And again, we want to make sure Mr. Knight knows we do appreciate his service. Thank you for that recognition. All in favor of the five, Mr. Robertson, nominate, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed likewise. Home Community Care Block Grant Committee, three appointments.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Mary Jo Danner.
Any other nominations? All in favor of Mary Jo Danner, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We've got two more we need to find a place for. Thank you. Criminal Justice Partnership Program Committee, two appointments. We now have any one for?
Move to table.
Motion to favor. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Local Mercy Planning Committee, committee, excuse me, LEP, three, thirty-six appointments.
Do we need to read them all by name? Or can you?
Sir, if you could just read the last names, that might be best for the public.
Okay, so we do need to read all the names?
Just the last names.
All right. I'll do it quickly. All right. Greg Ashley, David Bradley, Marty Byers, Donna Campbells, Pam Campbell, Evelyn Clark, David Klein, David Clover, Tim Coffey, John Crone, Anita Christian, Dr. Hampton Drum, Wes Green, Chuck Harris, Ben Hess, Terry Hosh, Tracy Jackson, Brady Johnson, Scott Leinhardt, David Martin, Donnie Perry, Lloyd Ramsey, Scott Rhodes, Craig Robertson, Gay Rochester, Danny Rose, Matthew Selves, Larry Stroud, Donna Swiscott, Mitzi Summers, Linda Thompson, Sarah, Hair Teiskin, Von, Ronnie Wooten, Steve Young, and Steve Bridges.
Okay, and that's your motion?
I'm glad we didn't have seventy-two people on the.
Motion to reappoint, then, right.
Motion to reappoint.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. Thank you, Mr. Robertson. Any unfinished business? Public comment period. Ms., Mr. Hemrick, did you have, did you want to speak? You already done what you want to do. Okay. Thank you, sir. New business, anyone? County Management Report, Mr. Mashman.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have anything other than the activities report that's been submitted to you, and also just to remind you that because of Christmas holidays next week, the county offices will be closed Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. Of course, emergency services will operate as usual. And I do have a closed session matter, property acquisition, one forty-three-dash-three-eighteen-point-elevena5.
Thanks, sir. All in favor of that motion, property acquisition, please say aye.
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 Okay, we're now going to close session. Thank you, Mr. Mashman.
Uh-oh. Press here.
One paper left.
Okay. Yes, the resort of our closed session, we will have an accident to be taken.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, we have an opportunity to purchase some land adjacent to our landfill. And by virtue of this purchase, we could extend the life of that existing landfill by about thirty years. The alternative to that would be to locate another landfill somewhere here in the county. And we consider this option to be better, which is to buy some land adjacent to the